Hello. Okay, so.
Calling meeting in order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since all board members are here in person, there was no need to establish a quorum. The, um, we have 12 signed up this evening for public input, all boundary related, so we'll do that right before we get to that item on the agenda. Um, with, usually we just allow fifteen minutes for public input during a board meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to extend that to three minutes a person for thirty-six minutes total.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So for the people speaking tonight, three minutes each. We'll call you up. Um, we have a timer and all that, and so, um, if you have spoken, again, I've seen some repeat customers here. Um, if, um, I'd ask if you've already stated something, make sure, just focus on the new items and so forth, uh, instead of maybe things you've addressed before. Onto approval of the minutes of the meetings held June eighth and seventeenth.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the meetings held June eighth and seventeenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. On the meeting held, uh, June seventeenth, I would like to clarify, I thought Board Member Baker had made a motion and no motion was made. Um, that wasn't in the minutes, but just to clarify that. Um, there are no persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items, so we will move to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Now, Deanne, the good news report.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, the Sioux Falls School District has been supplying breakfast and lunch meals to students in a grab-and-go format since schools closed back in March due to COVID-19 concerns. That important service continues throughout the summer, just as it has every summer for many, many years, through the federally funded, state-administered USDA Summer Food Service Program. And that program, I know there's some people that get confused about whether you have to qualify for free and reduced lunch. The summer program, any child ages one to eighteen can participate. There are no income guidelines. There's no paperwork to fill out, nothing that needs to be shown when the student arrives for that meal. Um, so the child simply needs to visit one of our six locations, which are up on your screen, between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of our school weeks, except for, and I can't even remember, is the Fourth of July on a weekday this week? If it is, it's a Saturday. Okay, so we'll serve even, even up to then. So those are our six locations, um, at our schools, plus the Food Service Center, which is located at eleven oh one Northwestern Avenue, which is right across the street from the Premier Center. So again, no income guidelines, no paperwork, no ID necessary. Um, and on Monday, the children receive two meals. On Wednesday, two meals, and then Friday, one meal. So, um, we're cutting down that contact time that our students, uh, or that our staff has with those families coming to get meals, but still providing enough meals for the entire week. Um, this has really proven to be a lifeline for many families whose children are being cared for by perhaps older siblings, who maybe mom and dad don't want the older sibling cooking or having, uh, the oven or stove on during the day when, when they're home with the younger ones. So we really look at this as an option for all families. It's not just for low-income families, and it's not just for, you know, those nearby. Anyone who can get to these locations is, uh, welcome to participate. And speaking of getting to those locations, transportation can sometimes be a challenge for many families, but we have good news on that front as well. Uh, for the past few years, the city of Sioux Falls has been offering the Freedom Pass to all students, and they are doing that again this summer through the end of August. So the Freedom Pass, um, your student's school ID allows them to hop on a SAM, a Sioux area metro bus on one of their lines, and ride to various locations throughout the city, not just to our pre-summer lunch programs, um, but anywhere in the city. And, uh, if your child does not have a school ID, uh, you can call the SAM office, and they can provide a, a card for you that is, uh, part of that Freedom Pass. Children ages six to ten must be accompanied by a regular paying adult. Uh, students eleven to eighteen may ride unaccompanied. So, uh, for your older students who may need to get from point A to point B, that's a, an option available to them. And then, while they are out and about, uh, new this year is an opportunity for children who qualify for free and reduced-price lunches to receive free access to the Great Plains Zoo and the Washington Pavilion. You may remember in years past, those on free and reduced lunches were able to visit our swimming pools in the city. And with the pools being closed this year, um, the Great Plains Zoo and the Washington Pavilion step forward to provide that access for free for families who qualify. Uh, families must be residents of Sioux Falls and provide a, a proof of a Dakota EBT card or a food stamp card, a South Dakota Medicaid card, or a school district notification letter for, um, their free and reduced-priced lunch status. So qualifying families can get ahold of this form, and we will be making that form available, um, at our free lunch sites, as well as sending it out, um, in a mass email to our families this evening. So, again, um, really great partnerships that the Sioux Falls School District benefits from having in our community, um, allowing students to get out and continue their learning through the summer, um, and safely get to whatever locations, um, are necessary for their family. Any questions?
Thank you, Deanne. Like you said, um, the mayor was here earlier for the reception for Dr. Maher, and the partnerships we get from the city are so helpful to our families, our students, and our schools. So thank you. I know with the schools not being open, it's great to have another option. Um, I hope families are able to take advantage of this.
Thank you. And as usual, our commitment to providing meals for our students every summer, I mean, it's just, it, again, it's our, our way of making sure we, our kids are fed during the summer when they're not in our building. So thank you for that report as well.
I'm gonna piggyback on the good news report. Um, Dr. Maher, this is the surprise, so, sorry, would you stand? The school board would like to thank you so much for your five years of service. Our school and city are a better place because of your service to our district. We were very saddened when you told us you would not be staying on, but we are very excited to see what you will do with the Board of Regents and the opportunities that our district will have in the state of South Dakota due to your commitment and sharing your talents with them. So thank you very much, and, um, here's a plaque from you from the district. And there's a gift card and a, uh, get, a card from the board as well that, um, is usable both in Sioux Falls and all the restaurants that are usable both in Sioux Falls at all the restaurants that are like Red Rosa and all that, but also in Pierce, so depending where you want, where you want to take Peg out to eat, so, thank you very much.
Exactly, we planned it well. Um, okay, no new conflicts of interest were presented this evening. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, night, um, items 9A through H. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Onto supplemental consent, is there some this time? Yes. Um, I printed out mine early again. Um, so, onto supplemental claims to Sanford Healthcare System, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes with two abstentions, Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. Onto 10B, claims to ever healthcare, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Now to reports of the superintendent, um, 11A Consolidated Application of Federal Programs Report, Anne Smith. And this is also Anne's last report, I believe, with the district for school districts, so thank you for all of your service to the district as well, Dr.
Can you remind us, how many years have you worked here?
20.
20.
You're 10. I started, remember Y2K?
Way back then.
Y2K ended with COVID.
Yep.
The South Dakota Department of Education is required by the federal law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, to collect pan, plans from each public school district, describing how that district will address the requirements of the law, as well as the specific activities that the district will do using the funds. The specific programs included are Title I, which is to improve basic educational programs, Title II, which is professional development, ensuring excellent teaching and learning, Title III, support for English language learners, and then Title IV, which is, um, one of the more flexible of the four programs, which can go through resources to provide student support and academic enrichment. This table provides a three-year look at how funding has been trending through these programs. As you can see, overall, the trend is downward with funding from the federal government. The Title I Part C, which includes, which says not yet available, we did just learn today that that allocation will be up about $100,000, it'll be $558,000. So that's one that's going in slightly in a more positive direction. The Title I funds, Title I, it, to improve the overall programming for students who are, um, qualify for free and reduced lunch, this was the program, this is the program that's developed to even the playing field. Uh, and the, the law says that any school that has 75% or more of their students qualifying for free and reduced lunch must be served with Title I funds, and any school that has over 40% may be served. The Sioux Falls School District, uh, does, the Sioux Falls School District only has elementary schools that would fall within that requirement of being more than 75%, and we have chosen to, to consolidate our funds and focus our funds at the elementary level to provide early interventions. So the 10 schools that we serve, serve with Title I funds are listed there. As we look at what we use those funds for, our primary focus is on class size reduction at the early grades, kindergarten and first grade, and then also reducing our class sizes at the Elementary Immersion Center. We also provide a reading intervention teacher at all of our Title I schools, as well as some preschool slots and elementary instructional coaches, some additional ELL teachers to provide even more support in our Title I schools for ELL students, as well as teachers to provide some additional behavior supports. We use the funds for professional development, social workers, and then also equitable services for private schools. All of these programs have the requirement to provide equitable services to the private schools in our district. Title I Part C is another section of Title I, this one is specific to those students whose families qualify as migrant. Um, migrant families are those families who have moved to Sioux Falls for the purpose of obtaining employment in an agricultural, a qualifying agricultural occupation, which in our case is mostly Smithfield and, uh, the meatpacking plants. So, we use the Title I Part C money to help with school home liaisons, most of our migrant families are also ELL families, so the school home liaisons are helping to, with communication. Parent University to help those families understand how to best support their students in our education system, as well as 34 preschool slots for those children, and, and they have to qualify as migrant in order to qualify for those preschool slots. We also then use it to provide some tuition funds so that high school migrant students can attend summer school classes, and then professional development. Title I Part D is the section of Title I that is specific to those students who qualify as neglected and delinquent. These would be students who have come into contact with the juvenile justice system, or who are at risk of being taken into the juvenile justice system. Uh, we use the funding to provide a reading teacher at Summit Oaks and, uh, previously at VOA, uh, for the Heiser Treatment Center, which has ceased operation at the end of this year, so we won't be funding there in the fall. Uh, we also provide a math teacher at the Minnehaha Juvenile Detention Center, a transition coordinator who tracks and helps these students as they move back and forth between the sites, and then we are also able to use these funds to provide some dropout prevention for those students who are at risk. Title II A is primarily professional development, and those, those funding recommendations for those activities recommended for funding through Title II, oh, Part A include, uh, elementary instructional coaches at our elementary schools that are not Title I schools, Boys Town Training to continue that behavior program that we've had, the Teacher Pathway and Teacher Internship Programs, this helps provide the funding for the staff to teach those classes. And then overall professional development, you'll be hearing in a couple weeks about the school improvement plans that all schools are doing, this is where the funding comes for that professional development. And then again, we provide equitable services to the private schools. Title III, uh, support for our English language learners, um, we can't use this for direct instruction, because that instruction is required through civil rights to all, to all of our ELL students, we have to pay for that out of our regular district dollars, but we can improve that program, and we do so by providing some additional support for middle school and high school classes that have a significant number of students at the early levels of English proficiency. Um, we also provide an ELL instructional coach, ongoing, regular training for all of our new teachers on PSYOP, which is the instructional strategies that work best with ELL students, and then also tuition and supplies for our classroom teachers who would like to go and get their English as a new language endorsement. And then again, equitable services for private schools. And then Title IV, finally, which is one of the more flexible programs, um, half, what you spend, can spend money on falls into three buckets. You can ensure a well-rounded education, and to do so, we are using some of these funds to also help support the SIPs reading intervention, it pays for the coach that works across all of the schools, the 1.5 FTE coach. Um, we also have used the funds to pay for summer school at the Elementary Immersion Center, and then exam fees for those students who can't afford to pay for the AP exam. Um, the second bucket is to improve conditions for learning, uh, and so we have used these funds to provide the FTE for the Eagle Vision Program at McGovern Middle School, as well as to provide a .5 counselor for the Joe Foss Program, and then success coordinators, a .5 success coordinator at Whittier and McGovern Middle School. And then finally, enhance the use of technology. And this is the Tableau system that Nicole and Doug have been putting together and helping us to take the rich data that we have, but visualize it and make it more understandable, as well as a learning management system to help us coordinate, it came in, to help us coordinate online instruction, and this learning management system came in particularly handy during the remote learning situation that we found us in this, ourselves in this spring. And then finally, equitable services again for private schools. So that's a quick, speedy overview of the consolidated application, which will be submitted in time for the due date of July 1st, 2020, and I would ask that the board acknowledge the report.
Thank you, Anne. Questions?
Well, thank you for all your work on this, and this is such an important part of our district to help improve the equity amongst our buildings, so, um, thanks for getting this work done. I know these applications are tedious and overwhelming, but thank you for getting these done for our students and families, so appreciate it. Do I have a motion to approve the consolidated report?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in second to acknowledge the consolidated report, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to the boundaries, in respect to the public, um, should we do public input first, so that then if anybody needs to take off, they can, and then go into the report and voting? Okay. Um, like I said, I have 12 people. The first two are about the process, so I'll, I'll start with them, and then we'll move into the middle school and the high school speakers. Uh, the first one, um, when you come up, everyone please state your name and address and, uh, speak into the mic so you can be picked up if people are watching at home and so forth. And that will be John Claussen, please.
I have my envelopes again today.
Yes, so she'll show when there's a minute left and 30 seconds, and then a buzzer will go off when the three minutes is up, so you can, oh, thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. My name is John Claussen, lifelong resident of Sioux Falls, address 3109 South Lincoln Avenue. Um, I want to begin by actually apologizing for being here, because I had said what I was going to say on June 8th, but then I saw some things in the press last week, which I have not been able to further look into, because the video hasn't been released yet, and that's fine. But apparently a fellow member, I was a member of the task force, and a fellow member of the task force is suggesting in the press that we dealt with race. Well, a person brought it up, and the question was ignored, I brought it up three times over the course of three meetings, we dealt with it briefly, and another person brought it up in the last meeting, but they never dealt with race, and they should have, and because of that, the whole process should be started over again. It, in the press report last week, it was suggested that somehow that by dealing with economic status, we're dealing with racial status. But that was never mentioned during those three meetings, and more importantly, I think that reinforces racial stereotyping. That's like saying, we're gonna hold a census, a national census, and we're just gonna count the white people, and how, we're gonna determine how many minorities there are in this country, we're gonna look at food stamp data. That is obnoxious and wrong. They never dealt with race. In fact, at the last board meeting on June 8th, we even had a board member admit that they didn't deal with race, so she's conflicting with a task force member who claims that we did, and we should have dealt with race. It's very important. It was important even before George Floyd, but it's even more imperative now, and we are ignoring that issue. In fact, when it looked like the board was going to adopt the A2 proposal on Friday, June 12th, they didn't even release racial information until I inquired about it. So I think it's very disingenuous for some fellow task force members to suggest that we dealt with race. Some of us tried to, but the board ignored it, and did not even give us that information until we requested it. And let me conclude also, that I also raised in the June 8th meeting a concern about Dr. Martin Luther King Day. I, it used to be a day that we helped, we recognized until the Save the Summer Program took, uh, impacted the calendar beginning in 2013, and then that was lost. And last year, when we had schools starting on August 22nd, we had, we didn't observe Dr. Martin Luther King Day, but this year, with this starting on August 27th, well, we're observing a day off in October for Native American Day, but it doesn't, it's not mentioned. We're, we're also observing a third week off for Martin Luther King Day, but it's not mentioned. And what I'm talking about is the calendar for two months on the website is acknowledged that we're taking those two days off, but no mention that they're Native American Day or Dr. King Day, but they do talk about Veterans Day, they do talk about Labor Day. So, I mean, there's, there's, I, I'm not saying that anybody is racist on this board, but there's an inherent racist, of racism that's going on that needs to end, and that's why I believe this whole process, and I think we have enough time to do this, has to start all over again, and look at the racial stats, and, and ask ourselves, why is Roosevelt and Memorial so white, and Whittier so black? We need to bring people together, and until we do that, I don't think we're really gonna solve any of the problems this country has, and equally, this, this city has. And I ask for you to take a second look once again, with, with looking at racial data in terms of the boundaries. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Claussen. I just want to point out, the videos are on YouTube immediately after, so I'm sorry, just for future reference if you need to, and, and I'm not interacting, just explain something, and if you would look at the calendar today, um, online, actually, both those holidays are observed on there on the.
Right, I've got copies of it, not being observed and then not observed, and I was, up to about like 4:45 today, I was trying to find the video, but I'm not, I mean to be argumentative, I'm just saying that I was.
I'm not interacting, I'm just letting you know, and the calendar, if you look today, actually says on the parent on, yep.
Yeah. It's been correct.
Okay, Jeff Griffin, please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Jeff Griffin, I'm president, oh, sorry, of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. Happy to report, as of last week, my new address is 1009 North Danielle Drive here in Sioux Falls, so, thank you. And Dr. Maher, I've been to board meetings when the school board president says there's a surprise for the superintendent and it doesn't go well, so, congratulations on a job well done. Um, I'm here to briefly speak to you guys, not only as a chamber president, but as a father. Um, I'll have two children, one will be at the Career Technical Education Academy, and my son, and my daughter Camilla will be a sophomore at Washington High School. So, uh, much of what attracted my wife Rosie and I to Sioux Falls, when job opportunity came up, was the school district and a very positive outlet. Todd was our community tour guide when my wife visited, and appreciate that, so from top to bottom, we've been treated with the utmost respect, um, I have a special needs son, and top-notch services. From a business perspective, I want to commend you for the thorough process on the redistricting. I've had the unfortunate circumstance of living in a community that had to redistrict because of a school closing, and as emotional as it can get, um, that is way worse, I can assure you of that. So I'm not trying to minimize it, because I know there's sacrifices everyone has to make for the redistricting, but the process you guys went through was professional, and we hear that loud and clear, and it gives us a lot of opportunity to help recruit and grow businesses the way we want to, so, thank you.
Thank you. We will start, uh, this looks like middle school, thank you. Troy Bitterman, please come up and state your name and address, thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Troy Bitterman, I live at 4712 South Jandal. Um, I'm here to talk about, uh, the JFK area. I, I know there's been, you guys probably had a lot of emails about that, uh, but I haven't seen too many people come and talk, I want to let you know that, um, maybe it'd be nice to see a face come in. One of the things I've looked at is, there's a lot of different things you guys have to go through, um, and I learned something just tonight about how, uh, the money comes through for some of the, the title and helping other schools, and how changing the boundary in one area can just affect that. Uh, and I think there's a lot of things that parents don't, might not understand when they see this. I appreciate that you guys have added, uh, an option for JFK with Memorial, I live on that edge of town, and that's a huge difference timewise for me. One of the things I did consider was, how does that affect the rest of JFK, how does that affect Oscar Howe, and the travel that they would take if it was Oscar Howe that was split? I, I don't know if you guys have looked at that, um, but from the parent view, we haven't seen that, so we don't understand if you've looked at that or not, and, um, if you have it, it'd be kind of neat to, to know that just as a parent, so, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jackie, is it Ball or Bull, they use Ball, thank you, I couldn't tell, sorry about that, and please state your name, name and address.
Hello, I'm Jackie Ball, and I do live in the JFK area as well, that's looking at getting the split option, and, um, And kind of right off of 47th and Sertoma, so 3904 South Plateau Trail is my address. And we have looked at a lot of different options. I know like, obviously you guys have all looked at tons of different ways that this can be done. And I think kind of the whole result ends up being is that we're not all going to get what we would like to stay. Well, you know, change is going to be necessary. I think that as a whole, we recognize that. I am concerned a little bit about looking at that option or why it wasn't an option that was on the table before with the shift of students that are going to, looking at JFK as a whole. I don't think it's as important to keep that school together, which is a lot of things I keep hearing about. I can tell you, having kids in middle school, it all changes. You know, my daughter has maybe three, four kids that she actually knows that are in her classes now. Otherwise, her new friends are her new friends in middle school. So I think that's less of an issue as we battle through what do we need to keep together? Plus, that's part of them growing and learning. You go to a job, people change, it gets promoted, you know, your boss leaves, you know, things happen. So they have to, you know, change as well is not always a bad thing. But looking at the option to have JFK, have some students that stay at Memorial becomes important because when we look at the factors of Edison and the capacity factors of both schools, right now with the current enrollments, which is kind of the numbers that we use to crunch some of this, but currently that would put Edison basically at 90% capacity, which is where they said they did not want schools to be at. We already know that Memorial is way over capacity, but taking all of JFK out changes that significantly where they would actually be below the 90. And it also changes it so that those kids that would be all moving, that would then now be at Edison, it changes, I'm sorry, changes their capacity to be almost at that 90%, which we already said was not ideal for a school to function. And it takes away Memorial down below 90 still if we left that split there at Memorial. So if we were able to do that, it would alleviate a lot of, you know, some of the busting issues, some of a lot of the movement of students. And we would be able to actually equalize out that capacity a lot better between the two. Memorial is already holding that, but to get their numbers right, it only makes an 80 student difference. Memorial's building is much larger. So they've already been able to accommodate larger than that, so there isn't really a reason they can't.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelsey Nation? Am I saying that right? Thank you. Will you say your name and address, please?
My name is Kelsey Nation, 8605 West Nikita Drive. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of 106 parents and community members that live west of Ellis Road. When I emailed you, it was 97. I have an updated list if you need it. We want to start off by thanking you. We do understand this is a strenuous process and we respect your transparency and your willingness to hear from the community during this time. And speaking today, we're not asking for a second chance. We're asking for the board to look at an option that's currently in front of them. We are in support of middle school option A. This option has been an option since the beginning. It remained an option through the task force meetings. In reaching out to families west of Ellis and gaining support from my neighbors to speak to you all today, I came across zero people that were in opposition to middle school option A. But there was 100% opposition to A2 and A2 with a JFK split coming from the west side of Ellis. It is not solely the change of middle schools that our community is opposed to. The main concern is distance. Our neighborhoods are all approximately 1.1 miles away from Memorial. Our students currently have the ability to safely walk to Memorial, which allows them to participate in before and after school activities. With option A2, our students are at risk of not being able to participate in these activities. This is a real concern and something that needs to be considered. These kids have been participating in activities together, not only at the school level, but also in recreational activities. These rec activities are divided by neighborhoods into teams. T Ellis Road does not split these teams and groups. We have built relationships and trust with the families that our children have participated in these activities with, some since the age of four. T Ellis Road is not a natural boundary line that prevents our neighborhoods from being contiguous to the neighborhoods just east. Middle school option A keeps most cohorts together. This has been identified as a priority. We understand the board needs to do what's best for the 24,000 students in the district, but when the big difference between two of the options solely affects the pockets, we feel they need to be taken into consideration. Anytime the pockets have been spoken about during this process, the main concern seems to be growth. Priority five states that the boundary should accommodate growth and change. The numbers show that Memorial can accommodate the pockets and projected growth from Lenox. Priority five also states that the district should utilize the city's five-year growth projection. According to the city's five-to-10-year growth projection for that Lenox area, the growth does not equal out to 1,000 students. It equals 300 housing units. 8% of those 300 units figures growth for middle school, which is the formula used to project growth for Ben Rifele. You're looking at 109 students in total. The district gave you a thought to consider keeping the pockets at Memorial and stated that Memorial is able to comfortably accommodate our group of students. The projected growth from the Lenox land is not enough within the next 10 years to surpass that level of comfort. We hope that you take this information into consideration as you're trying to make the decision that is best for all students within the district, ours included. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Neil Chaney. Please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Chaney, 7616 West Strawn Street. So I live in the wonderful Chesapeake Triangle. And so I'm going to talk briefly about that because, as you know, you developed that option during the last school board meeting. So, politics is the art of compromise, of course. So, well, option C is one of the more favored options across the board, certainly. As a compromise, for those of us in the Chesapeake Circle, we appreciate that. Obviously, the figures for Lincoln really blow out of proportion on C, which I think is probably the leading cause of not wanting to follow that. So we appreciate your willingness to acknowledge the difficulty for the Chesapeake Circle, our triangle parents, and give us an opportunity to still send our kids to school in eight to 10 minutes instead of being on the very, very far end of Jefferson. So, thank you.
Next, we have Mary Ann Mergan. Please state your name and address.
My name is Mary Ann Mergan. I live at 2221 South Monticello Avenue in Sioux Falls. I also live in the Chesapeake Triangle. First of all, I want to thank you for your time. I feel like this is just the way you've conducted yourselves and handled yourselves. And I feel that we've been heard. We're just thankful and grateful and we appreciate you. When I spoke last week, I went back and watched it and I just feel like maybe I didn't discuss enough how the, you're using the waterway as that dividing line. And one thing I'd just like to say about that is that is a neighborhood creator, not a divider. Kids, my sons have fished down there with the neighborhood kids, those join backyards. We, we live across the street from the waterway and because there is no sidewalk on the back of our block and we don't know when there will be, there is a one-mile loop around that waterway that is a safe, continuous sidewalk, not that will be used partly to walk to Roosevelt High School from our home, but also it causes all the children to ride their bikes around there because it's safe. There isn't any streets to cross. So our neighborhood friends all live on the other side of that waterway. And that, that really happens all along that waterway. It really is a neighborhood joiner rather than a divider. The other thing I just want to talk about is that in that pocket, we appreciate so much that you made that compromise last week and allowing us to stay at Roosevelt isn't going to change the numbers, but it will change our lives. It truly will change our lives. So I just want to thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. Next, Dina Kittleson. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dina Kittleson and my address is 7001 West Strabane Trail. I also am part of that Chesapeake Triangle as it got named. We are on the east side of Sertoma. It helps make that up. And really, I just wanted to, again, appreciate you guys listening and adding things on the way you did last week. And I'm just bringing two additional visuals for you. I don't know, you guys have busy lives. If you got over and toured our area this last week, I'm kind of guessing not, understandable. But I just brought two visuals. One of them is just an actual photograph and it's just kind of the whole, that continuous sidewalk I talked about last week and pointing out that it is, it's almost like a, like the Sioux Falls, like the bike path. It's very large and it also has extended wide boulevards that go all the way down both sides of Sertoma. And then these starts again up at 26th Street and on the east side, it is continuous all through Chesapeake and then going down Sertoma as well. So I just brought that as a visual. You've all seen sidewalks and it's probably nothing profound, but we just thought that might be helpful. And then the other map, you guys are probably so overlooking at maps at this point, but this just, again, highlights the Chesapeake Triangle. And talking about what Mary Ann said, the waterway versus being a natural boundary versus 26th Street being the natural boundary. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, in a kind of a blown-up version, the different schools with the waterway being kind of in the middle of the three elementary areas, but then how the difference between Roosevelt and Jefferson and how little the difference is between 26th and the boundary, but then the 100 kids in this area right here, like Mary Ann said, the difference between the kids being able to walk that continuous or, you know, pathway versus figuring out the driving up here. So it's just kind of added visuals. And I guess we're just asking you to vote for option C. Or again, with the compromise, you know, nobody is going to get everything they want no matter what you pick, but the A with Chesapeake. So again, thank you for your time tonight.
Next is Greg Michelson. Please state your name and address.
My name is Greg Michelson. I live on 1804 South Strabane Circle, which is also part of the Chesapeake area. One thing that I did some reviewing of the maps of the boundary options and based on what I can tell, if you're as close as we are to Roosevelt, to Lincoln, Washington or Jefferson, those students, if they lived in the same proximity, would go to those three corresponding schools. So with us being that close and that safe of a route, though option C would be the ideal, that's what the task force suggested, but consider option C or option A with the Chesapeake addition because it really is about the safety of our kids. And it's such a small number that is gradually going to decrease because families tend not to leave this part of town because it's a nicest area to live in. I mean, lots of parts of Sioux Falls are, but in my little neighborhood, over half the people have had kids that have graduated from Sioux Falls schools and they're still there. And we've got 80-year-olds that haven't left this part of town. So the numbers that we are putting into Roosevelt will gradually decrease over time or remain flat. Thank you. And don't envy what you guys have to decide tonight.
Thank you. Next, Melanie Zeeman. You're good? Thank you. Next, we have Mark Muren.
I just wanted to thank you for the process and.
Would you say your address too? Sorry.
3509 South Genevee.
Thank you.
Here in Sioux Falls. I just want to thank you for the opportunity and the way you've opened it up to the public and the things you did. I, I think it's been great and I know it's not easy. It'd have been me out of room in the boundary and said, how you like that? But I understand what you did and I, I support all the people that spoke. And I just wanted you to know that I think A, or the A with.
Chesapeake.
Chesapeake. I called it Silver something. I don't know how that happened. But anyway, and, you know, I think those are both good options and I'm sure as I looked at C, I, you know, whatever. I, I just think you evened up things, in my opinion, tried to be fair to all children and I, I applaud you and I, I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mick Zeeman. Name and address, please.
I'm Mick Zeeman. I live at 7601 West Chesapeake Lane. I have four students in the district and my wife is a teacher in the district also. I'm not speaking to sway your votes. My wife spoke last week and you know what our opinion is, option C or A with Chesapeake. I suspect you've had a challenging few months, to say the least, going through this process. I'm just simply here tonight to thank you, the board, Dr. Maher, Dr. Knold, Mr. Morrison and the task force and everybody who's selflessly given their time, energy and talents to developing these new boundaries and these choices for our children. You were elected to make difficult decisions on behalf of almost 200,000 people for 24,000-plus kids. You stepped up and accepted the challenge, knowing it would inevitably be messy and controversial. I'd like to thank you on behalf of my family for your transparency, attentiveness and professionalism you've handled this issue with. No matter the outcome of the vote tonight, our family will respect and honor the decisions made. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up and making a difference in the lives of our children. Thank you very much.
That was a great way to end public. Thank you.
Can we just go home now?
Yeah. Doug, onto the hard part here. Thank you. And once again, Doug, team, everyone who has been working on this, we threw another loop this weekend and you rose to the challenge. And as the public, I don't know if you're all aware, the middle school vote will now be Thursday. Because of that new change, we wanted to give enough time for public input. So today, we'll only be voting on the high school option as well as grandfathering and those other options for that, so.
Doug, do you want me to put these away or should I continue to do them?
Yeah, you might want those, the timing card.
Perfect. All right. Good evening. So first thing, we'll just take a little bit of time to, not much, because this has been discussed many times in work sessions and board meetings, but just to remind everybody of where we've been in the process, that we've been at it for about 10 months now. And you can see, kind of laid out the timeline of what all's been accomplished, but just in summary, July through December, a lot of the background work that's been done to get us to this point, just a lot of studying of the data, a lot of meeting with different groups, hiring Joe Donovan, the facilitator, and then putting the boundary committee together. And that was kind of all the background work that was done. And then after the first of the year, we launched into the boundary committee, sometimes called the task force. But we had three initial meetings, which allowed us to narrow down to some initial options to take out to the community for, for comment. And then we also started our online feedback through Let's Talk, which I think we're probably up close to 1,000 submissions that we have received since the first of the year. And then May, you know, we had to take a little bit of a turn and we had hoped to have live community sessions, but we ended up with virtual community sessions and we had five of those and I think they went very well. We used technology, brought everyone together and I, people, I think people were able to dial in and say what they wanted to say and to dialogue with us down here. And so that, and we took feedback that way. And then from listening to the task force, we, they wanted to have another meeting, wrap-up meeting, and so we accommodated that. So we actually had a fourth meeting, which was one more than we had originally thought we would. And so tried to bring everything back to them. And so that was a meeting, good meeting. And then, and then we kept on going with the feedback through the Let's Talk application. And then that brought us to June, where essentially at the June 3rd board work session, we brought everything to you, even though you were kind of monitoring the process along the way, we brought it formally to you. And so brought all the different options of process we followed and feedback we have received and sort of at that point brought it to you. And then we went into, from there, the June 8th board meeting, in which case we looked at middle school, high school options, as well as we covered open enrollment, grandfathering, things like that again. And then we had another work session. And then we had another work session. I think something we didn't maybe envision happening at the outset, but to your credit, in light of trying to hear, look at, you know, every stone unturned, every, every piece of feedback out there in the community, you guys added a work session on the 17th and looked at some additional options. We looked at some options that came through the community portal. We had great people out there that really came up and technically really did some, some different options and we brought those to you. And then, and then so finally, what we're bringing here tonight is, I think, where we sit as far as the live options that I'll call. There's been many options, but these are the ones that I think are still being considered. And so I'll switch over to that. We'll start with the middle school options as far as where we sit with, we still have our original middle school option A, which was, came out of the task force and went to the community early on. And so that one, again, the signature there, piece of that is really the, that's where JFK is going to, over to Edison. And that's kind of the, that really is signature piece of how to divide up the west side or the overcrowding at Memorial. And then option A2, you had us look at an option where we would essentially take A, but we would take everything west of T Ellis and we would move that to George McGovern Middle School instead of Memorial. And that's the, essentially the change for A2. And then this last weekend, again, after you listening to community feedback and doing some more studying, you had us create an option A2. A2 JFK split is essentially what we call it. But that's bringing the, essentially moving the northwest portion of JFK. And instead of having that go to Edison, bringing that into Memorial. And that's about 113 students. So that's the piece of that, that was released over the weekend. And so this is probably your first time meeting as a group to look at that option. And so then we get into the numbers of each one of them. And you know, the signatures really are the difference between A and A2, again, is that that area west of T Ellis Road, which the middle school cohort, we, you know, if you looked at it in terms of what we project going there in the fall of 2021 would be about 85 students roughly. So that's kind of the difference in there. And then the JFK split, as I said before, is taking about 113 students that were going to go to Edison and moving and letting them stay at Memorial where they stay today. So the total JFK cohorts, about 286 students, so 113 would go to Memorial in this scenario and the rest would go to Edison. So that's kind of the difference between the middle school options at this point. And of course, we know in option A, again, to talk about the, one thing to point out is the specialty programs. In option A, we have the honors program going to Patrick Henry and the Spanish immersion program to Edison. And so those are consistent all the way through all the different versions. High school, we have the original option A, which was, which again, came out of the task force and has been, gone through the community process. And at this point, that's its original format. And then with the, at the last meeting, prior to the last meeting, you had us look at an option A, which is the Chesapeake area, now affectionately known as the Chesapeake Triangle, I guess, which is that area down here. You can see the blue circle there, where we're bringing that into Roosevelt, whereas originally it was going to go up to Jefferson. Because this line in the original option A really follows kind of the discovery boundary, discovery elementary school boundary. So this, this flattens it off and brings that area into, back into Roosevelt. And then option C is the option that came out of the task force as well and has, and is, is still a live option as well. So the signature of option C between option A and option C is this using 26th Street here as the boundary between Roosevelt and Jefferson. And then it brings the border between Lincoln and Roosevelt. It moves it over from Minnesota to Western. And then up here in this, the northern part, northern part of what's the Lincoln boundary, it swings a portion of that, really the Hawthorne Elementary School boundary for the most part, it moves that over into Jefferson. So as I talked about last meeting, it kind of shifts everything up and over in kind of a counterclockwise way to keep the numbers similar for each school. And then presenting the numbers there as well. So those are the, the options. Other than, other than the new middle school JFK split option, none of these are new and have been out in the community for a week or two. And as you heard tonight, have been commented. So I think tonight, your plan was maybe to, to vote on high school and grandfathering and things like that. So I'll let you guys to that and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Maybe should we just start with the grandfathering and then we can move into discussion on the high school options? We, we've kind of revealed our cards early. We haven't discussed it lately, but what we're talking about right now is the grandfathering portion of where we would like to see the line drawn for students and so forth. Would anyone like to entertain a motion on the grandfathering?
I would make a motion to allow the 2021-22 school year in district senior students that they may elect to remain at their current school, even when their current school is not their home attendance center after the boundaries have been redrawn, as long as those who are impacted notify the district of their intent to stay at that school prior to December 1st, 2020, on the appropriate form that is provided by the Sioux Falls School District. And grandfathering of seniors does not extend sibling preference to additional household members.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I think we've had conversations about this and we know that this may add some challenges to some families. We understand that. But we also know that it's likely a one-year kind of transition to get people to their schools and things like that. And as much as we would love to have all siblings be able to stay in their schools, I think it's just prolonging the, drawing it out longer and longer for when, and our numbers that we've been using to make decisions would really mean nothing to us at that point if we continue to let that go. So we certainly appreciate the sacrifice that families will have to make for that year, potentially having people at two buildings. But we do think it's the best thing to do for the future of the community.
No further discussion? Shall we take a, early take a vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to allow the 2021-22 school year in district senior students may, to elect to remain at their current school, even when their current school is not their home attendance center after the boundaries have been redrawn, as long as those impacted notify the district of their intent to stay prior to December 1st, 2020, on the appropriate form provided by the Sioux Falls School District. Grandfathering does not extend sibling preference to additional household members. Signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. On to high school.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the boundaries for Sioux Falls School District, 495, beginning the 2021-22 school year, based on option C.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Seeing no second, the motion fails. Is there an alternative motion?
I'll make a motion to approve option A.
Option A has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
This is really, really hard. This is really hard. I'll just go through my thought process. So I looked at all of the five priorities that we had and I tried to write down how each one fit in to each area. And so some of the things that stuck out to me are that with option A, there's a 420-student difference between the highest and the lowest high schools. And so that's the smallest of any of the differences. And our goal was really to try to equalize and try to spread out our students among those four high schools. And there's also only a 12% difference in the pre and reduced price lunch between the highest and the lowest. And I think the closer that we can get that, the better our experiences will be for all of our students. I also, you know, we got comments about, you know, that our kids don't fly to school. And so they didn't like the crow flies measurements. And so I did sit down with the map and I looked at the, the district each boundary and I tried to pick the furthest point from all of the schools and do a map meet to see how long or how many miles it would take to get there. And really between all of them, they're all, there's people at every single school that are driving three to five miles at the longest. Washington actually has somebody that could be driving 8.2 miles because they have a, their district goes so far north. And Jefferson has up by Renberg, could be 7.4 miles. And so I felt like the distance really, regardless of the options, were very, very similar. They had lots of students in that three to five mile range. I also got a lot of feedback on safety and I have a teenage driver myself and so I understand that. But the data that I was able to find showed that in student drivers or drivers under the age of 19 in, in the year 2019, made up 12% of the accidents that happened. And the age group from 20 to 44 was about 46%. And so I feel like, yes, we do have young drivers, but I think we also need to help them to grow and learn their skills in low-risk situations. And driving to school is something that our kids are going to have to do. There's also more accidents on dry roads than there are wet or snowy roads, which I was very surprised by. So I appreciated all the questions that I got from people because it made me really go out and look for data that said, what, what am I missing and what else do I need to know? When I looked at number five, accommodating growth and change, when I look at the southwest part of Sioux Falls, there's a lot of young families in that area, in that Pettigrew area. And I feel like that's going to be growing. And so those students will need to have room at, in going north into Roosevelt's boundaries. And so at this point, we do have room for growth there. Lincoln is high, but as we've talked about numerous times, we are going to look at that open enrollment policy and try to make some adjustments to that so that we can even that out as well. And there's also growth available at Jefferson High School. So that when that northwest part of town also fills in, that there will be a lot of opportunity for students to go there too. So as we talked about in priority four, having, you know, trying to keep cohorts together. And I feel like it, it does do that. It keeps discovery together, Memorial, and then it also has a good balance of going to Jefferson too. So I don't mean to go on and on, but I just feel like I wanted to talk about, I did to really try to do my research and try to look at all of the things that people sent to me about why things should or shouldn't be a certain way. And I heard everybody and I think we all did. And I also wanted to comment, I know we're not on middle school, but just for your guys' information, so we met on Wednesday night, we were here for quite a while at the work session. We all went to our normal jobs on Thursday, so didn't really have time to digest all of the information. And then Thursday night was kind of the first time I had the time to sit down. And then me, you may or may not know, but the district offices work on a summer schedule and so then they're not here on Fridays. And so we were like trying to get information and they were so amazing to try to help us on a Friday into a Saturday. We don't like putting information out like really short turnaround of time, but we just felt like we really wanted to explore every option that we could when people gave us valid reasons to do so. And so that, I just wanted to throw that tidbit in about this.
The new option.
Yeah, the new option over the weekend. But anyways, I'll stop talking about, sorry.
I think too, for me, for option A, other than everything you've already said, Carly, which Carly is definitely the data geek of the group probably. So I appreciate that because we benefit from all of her questions. But one of the things I looked at in addition to those was, was also race. We were provided that, that data and that breakdown. So for me, option A really seems to equalize all of the high schools as much as they can. Obviously, we've just got some natural pockets in our community. And so I just, that was one of the reasons why I, I am in favor of option A is getting that ethnicity, that ethnic diversity that we're also seeking amongst our schools. And I would like to add just one thing that, you know, when we've looked at all of these tweaks and all of these different scenarios, I, we've received emails. I'm sure you, you know how many emails we've probably received, but we've probably been equal to, we oppose that or we favor that. So you know, it's, just want you to know that we took a lot of those and really tried to weigh, you know, what we feel is, is the best outcome for our community.
Most of mine were C. No, Doug and his team, I just wanted to thank you so much for coming in on days that you weren't supposed to come in on and providing us with the amount of information that we needed to make a good decision. That was, you guys really stepped up in the play.
Or any, yeah, yeah. Well, my comments would really just surround the, the people that showed up and sent the emails. We're all in this arena together. I see people here, they've given a lot of time and thought, dedication to the students.
Closer to the mic, Nancy.
And you're not sitting on the sidelines looking at the arena and all of us in here, but you've really gotten yourself involved and engaged and that speaks highly of you and to our district folks that have gotten involved. So it's, we have a lot to weigh and to think about and we're all in this together.
Definitely. I, I would also like to thank our board members. We've really, we have disagreements in what we think are the best options, but it's been handled very professionally. I appreciate that. And I know you all appreciate that we can work together as a team. So I want to commend you all on this very emotional issue. As far as option A, it's, it is hard. You know, I think I sent this in an email to a friend that I feel like sometimes it's Sophie's Choice. You move one thing, but you're doing that maybe at the detriment of another building. All of these high schools to all of us are, are child. You know, we want the best for each one of these buildings. And because of that, I look at all the guidelines that we presented to the task force and, and to the community as to what we uphold. I do believe that option A starts all, all of our high schools at a closer footing than the other options. So I am in favor of option A. Any further discussion? Do I call the vote? All those in favor of option A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
The motion carries for option A, high school, for the new boundaries. Thank you. We will vote on Thursday, 5:30 PM on the middle school option. We are still taking input. The three options that are up are A, A2, and A2 JFK split down Holbrook is the three remainder. We will now move on to some exciting capital improvement plan update. Jeff Kreider, I think, has some neat footage for... Jeff Kreider, I think, has some neat footage for the public to see.
Okay, this is going to be primarily just be talking through the, the video. And it's about 20 minutes long, so a little maybe, little over 20 minutes long. So giving an exciting view of the inside. We're going to try to take you into different sections of it and see where it's at. We did take a, a group through Jefferson last Monday, so some people have got it. But this is Ben Rifle, we're going to start with Ben Rifle. The crane is sitting in the library as we speak. And we're right now walking through the library and we're going to be moving into A1. What you're seeing there is a computer lab, trying to give you a feel for where they're at. Both buildings are about 50% complete. If you look at what the pay requests and those sort of things are at. So they're, they're both tracking about correctly at the same time. I always say is, this one feels a little behind the Jefferson, but Jefferson has a whole lot more interior to finish out when they, when they get there. So this is walking down the corridors to, into A1. And the special education wing will be right to your, to your right as you look at it. And we just had a rain when we went through this, so. I tried to take myself out of the picture a few times and cut this down, but every once in a while I'll pop in as I'm walking then. So thank you, Ben, for putting this together. But you can see these are the classroom pods right here. There's a movable wall in the middle. There I am. And you can kind of see, all these houses will be very similar. This is a science lab. They don't have the windows in yet. They've just started putting some exterior brick. And you'll, you'll get a picture of that as we go around and what it's going to look like. We're going upstairs now into A1. So these will be three classrooms. There's dividing walls. What they do is work outside. When it rains, they'll move in and do masonry on the rainy days. So we don't lose production during, during the rain when they're doing that. So and you can kind of see the rough ins for electrical, plumbing, fire are underway. So we're in progression and we'll move down to, to a little further as you speak, so. Some of the hot water piping, roof drainage systems are going in as you speak. I think we're going to look outside. Now you can see oversee the A3, which we'll go into in a minute. That's the farthest along. And we're walking, now you can, looking there is that's a walkway. The library would be on your left and then the grand stairs will be on your right. So that's probably poured already within the week. And they're, they're finishing, we've got all the bearing walls installed in A2 as we'll, we'll get there in a second. So this is tech ed area. So that's where you'll see those star configuration layouts. A3 is the darker material you're seeing. That's an air barrier that's been sprayed on. Where you see the scaffolding, that's where they're starting the brick and they're working around. So we'll get some of that. This is a lower, below that walkway we just talked about. And we'll probably head to A3 now as you walk there. This, the building is divided into three actual buildings and it's fire separation. That's what you're walking through right here. And this will be the locker bay for the A3 students. And this, this is probably the furthest long. Most of the, the soffits are constructed. You'll, you'll see the duck work is being installed. The roof is on this section already, so it's watertight. Windows aren't in, so you still get some leakage through, but we're able to get all the duck work. Fire sprinkler is in. So there's a lot more going on. If you can see the piping, that's a hot water, chilled water, domestic water. You also get compressed air and that for the science wings, the gas for the science. So quite a bit going on in A1. Once we get the windows in and get a little drying time and moisture content, you'll start seeing paint go in some of these areas. That's that back science area. There's really no students that go down through that. That's where the data closets, there's a staff bathroom and those sort of things that are, each house has one of those as well. So these will come together, I mean, it's, it looks like, but once you start putting paint and ceiling and casework and finishes, it goes fairly quickly after that point. And this is the main hallway that heads down towards the boiler room. As you can see where they step back in, they're building soffits at the entrances. Those, that's a conference room, TPC, where they drop back in and start working in the, in the wet. What you're seeing through here is that the counselor's area, we'll kind of do a, a complete loop of the office area. They've started framing the office walls. That's the bathroom yet to be built. That'll be another project. That's the elevator shaft. And we'll be getting to the left here, the main office suite that we'll walk through. That's pretty well all framed in. So the students will come in that front, there'll be glass and then we'll queue them in like McGovern is. That's the back where you have conference rooms, the assistant principals, principal's offices. Your staff restrooms are on the left. I don't know if you'll see that. You'll see the door. And then you'll, you'll get the counselor suites. We, we share conference rooms. We have a movable wall in a, in a conference room where you can have a larger gathering. And then you can shut it where each, the counselors and the admin has their separate conference rooms. And that's kind of a records room. And then what you can see beyond that is where the, the server room and library workroom right there. Okay, we're going to go upstairs to A2. This roof is, the decking is on now. And then they'll start doing the penthouse once that decking is on. So it's a little safer for the workers to build that penthouse above the roof. And what you're seeing in upper A2, these are the home ec rooms. And you probably can see the art room that's just beyond that, that will over, that's right next to the library. But the bar joists are installed in this photo. It's about a week and a half old now, so. Lot of progress make in a week and a half, two weeks. You can kind of see the, the brick as you look down. There's horizontal banding and there's some soldier coursing on the top. That's the A3 side that they started the brick on and they'll start working around. They have to get the brick on in a certain time period from that air barrier for it to be valid. So they have to start continuing on here. You can see the back service drive there as well. They've moved into area B, that's the music area. And you can see that some of that burlap that they've done and plastic on the, that's a curing. They're using a, a natural curing instead of a curing compound. It's better for floor installation and you don't have to worry about that chemical having to dissipate when that, when the flooring gets there. Sometimes that's hard for tile and carpet to adhere to. It's a general music room. Then you'll, you'll get into the band and choral and orchestra. Now, if you look at the, the ceiling, that is a precast ceiling of the roof structure. This whole music area is actually a storm shelter. So this will be, there's three storm shelters, one in A3. That's that resource room and the whole music area. And then the locker rooms are also going to be designed. You have to have a certain square footing based on the occupant load of the, the building. When we get to Jefferson, we'll, we'll show you what that is. That's a, some bigger areas as well. So this is the hallway as you walk down. What you're seeing there is the, the commons area. That will be the commons area. So they're going to be working around, they're starting the auditorium. The music areas to your right here that we just walked through. They're starting to pour floors in some of those storage rooms. And you'll get into custodial, then you'll get into the boiler room and, and some of those spaces. That's what this is right here and exterior storage. And then as you look past here, I think you'll just see a brief is that the service area, that's where the chiller and that box there will be where the electrical panels will sit. And now you see the auditorium. We'll walk over to that in the, as we get there. But the auditorium, they started building those masonry walls as well. So they're a little ahead in the, in the B area, a little behind in A2. So in the balance, last project meeting, we, we talked about that and they said they're, they're confident they're on schedule. So they're getting their scaffolds. The gym masonry will go fast, it's a single length wall. So you'll see some big progress as they move forward into that. And what they'll do now is get all the, you can see the locker room entrances, the staff dining areas as there. All the rough ins are under, in the ground. And you can see the corridor to the gym. And these are the locker areas, the one half is done. And then they'll put the precast panels on the, on the decking there. You can see all the electrical underground that is necessary to go into, to service all this. So it's amazing what, what goes into a building, you know, if you don't know what's underneath you.
For the public, we're so involved in this, we know this, oh. Do you have to turn off the lights? Somebody must have leaned against the lights. The building is, uses kind of the best of George McGovern and Memorial, is that correct?
That's a combination of that. The auditorium is McGovern's, A3 is McGovern's, and then the rest of it's McGovern flipped. So it's, it's rotated to get in the right orientation of the site. Faith Avenue, the, all the, all the utilities are in and whatnot, so they'll go in here. Now we're going to move to Jefferson High School. They're about double the size of building. So this is about twice the size of the building. You can kind of see where that main entrance was there. And what we're going to do is, this is kind of the first, first view of a lot of people of what this is going to look like. I mean, we're going to walk into the main entrance. Offices are to your left as you look at that picture. Vestibule, that column is right at the vestibule doors. Then you're going to walk in to a kind of a lobby area. Those windows there are going to be that courtyard that's in there so students can go out there and study. There's some areas where the benches, there'll be some concrete benches that they can even actually teach class in there. This is a commons area. There will be a, a grand stairs that go in front of those windows. This is a office, office area. We'll get back to the commons in a little bit. But the office area, they've got the rough framing, very similar to the Ben Rifle. And they'll do a loop, loop around so you can see the counselors. I think you're seeing the, the health suite right here. And that's the, that's the student services area. That's a commons. You can see the school store right in the front. And then, then concessions will be there as well. Here's a counseling suite and it's kind of the, a big U shape, so they, they link together. So there'll be the bathrooms that we just went past. Those recesses there are going to be display cases for trophies and those sort of, or whatever they want to use them for. It's kind of split in two areas of the commons. So it's quite spacious. What they did was instead of having all those big corridors like Roosevelt and Washington, they kind of made it all one. Very similar in size, but what you got. This is the gym, you just entered the gym from the commons. And this gym, you'll, you'll walk on the top level and then you, the bleachers, you'll go down into the bleachers. So there's the railing all the way across there. This is a fitness center, the weight room, fitness center. And, and there's a complete walking. The corridor, what we did is integrate into a, a walking track for, for people. So they'll have a surface that will be a walking track. This is a gymnastics room. And that's where the media will be. This is the entrance to the, to the back. You see the bus drop off loop for visiting teams. They'll park their buses in there and come in that back door. What you see out there is the tennis courts, the football field, and they're coming together as well. So like I said, the, the complete loop, there'll be like three, four walking areas along that whole thing. So they're starting to paint the ceiling in there. And then you're back in the commons. This is the food service area, kitchen. This is the farthest long of any, of all the places in this building. They've started painting. The duck work is completely done. They're going to start putting some ceiling grid in. You can see the walk-in coolers for the kitchen as we walk by there. And you'll see the, the boiler room, the main guts of the building. The boilers are set, the chillers are set. So it's quite impressive when you, when you take a look at that. And these are, they're not the high efficiency boilers that you get there, a 25 year solution. These are standard boilers that are 50 year, but we put the heat sponge in the back that gets into that same efficiency as high efficiency. And that's, that kind of came out of the ethanol plants and how they recapture the heat that goes through there. So we run the water back through those heat sponges and, and get the efficiency that we want. But then you got a 50 year solution as well instead of a 25. So right here is the tech ed back area. So you have, you'll have auto, you'll have welding and woods shop. And it kind of loops behind the auditorium. This is a big building, there's a lot going on. There's about 150 people that work daily here. I was supposed to cut that one out. That's the wood shop there. What we just went past is some, the ROTC, that's the dressing area. It's for the theater and now we're going into the music suites. And it's kind of a different setup is all the instrument storages in that center pod. What you see those openings there are all the practice rooms. So it's kind of a suite. And then the band room is off that. So you'll enter the band room right here. Wire. Then you'll get a orchestra, so. Big high ceilings. Oh, this is the, the black box theater right there. So that's all off that suite so they can feed their instruments and all the fine arts is working through that. There is a courtyard in the back. And as you walk out, you're back into that main commons area. And now we're walking into the auditorium. And now we're walking into the auditorium. This will be one of the final things done. There's a lot of work that has to be done through there. You're not seeing the built-up slopes yet. You're not seeing the dug-in. I mean, that whole, there's a double-tier slope. You walk in on the intermediate level, and it slopes down and slopes up. We were able to capture some of that underneath that slope stage for storage underneath there, so we enhance their storage. So, now we're going to kind of get Todd's favorite spot is their learning stairs. Okay, this is the furthest along learning suite that we have. Each one of those areas are recessed for lockers. Then there's breakout collaboration rooms in the middle. And as you can see, a classroom going, VAV boxes, fan-powered VAV boxes in each room for individual control. A lot of glass, a lot of access. And there's going to be, and for security. And each one has the stairs that go up to the top. And so, you'll see the upper portion here in a minute. So, a lot of circulation. If they schedule their classrooms, there's not going to be a lot of moving around out of these pods, depending on what their student's schedule is. So... This has a higher ceiling with clearer stories. Another collaboration room. They have some openings that go down to the lower level to kind of bring those together. The new tech does not have that collaboration room in the middle like that. They have it off to the side. So, when they have presentations, they can have seating up there and looking down on the presentation. So, tried to take in some of those things into account when we designed it. But there's going to be exposed ceilings in here, the lighting. So, there's a lot of acoustical work yet to do in there. This is a TPC that every level will have in each one of those houses. And as we move down, and this is an over, kind of move quickly there. This is overview. There's a stairs, grand stairs that'll go off to the right. This is a kind of a meeting area, kind of where kids can congregate. What we did was, they were going to have a 40-foot vestibule. So, we said, let's fill that in, and we can utilize it as space for students and for virtually no cost that we were able to do that. This is probably one of the best views in the building is that second level looking down on the learning stairs. And then you'll also look down to the library here, to the right there. So, there's a long linear library. There's open railings throughout there. And it's kind of recessed down, so there's a, to give it more volume. And then there, if you look at, I think we're going to, you'll be down in there. You'll see some of the benches. There's kind of a bench, reading benches that they can do some things. There's some unique things to it. But each one of these pods are at various levels. And by the time you get to the end, there won't be any floors yet. And so, they're doing some sewer work down in that area. You can kind of see it, see what it looks like. You stand in that upper collaborative room, and it just feels like you're out. You're standing by yourself, so out in the middle of everything, on a cloud. So, pretty unique area. I said we should have probably given this before, you know, the boundary and everybody would want to come to this school.
Well, I was hoping some that might have been affected would have stayed. Let's be excited.
This is the mechanical room. There's main air handlers for each pod as you break through, and each one goes to one side. And you can see the two that sit up there. I think we'll start going a little faster as we run out of, when the construction's a little less. There's two elevators, one that services the lower gym portion and the upper and the commons. And then this serves the academic area. And you can see the deck. That's waiting to be, concrete to be poured. There'll be some electrical work that has to be done on the decking before they pour that floor. But all the structural steel is in place now, and they're starting to frame stud work around the building.
So, I heard the magical phrase during Ben Rifele of "on time" is Jefferson.
So far, they're both on time.
How about budget?
And on budget.
Great.
So, we're looking good on both, on both buildings and that. This is kind of the brick and the precast around the brick, and they're working through that. We caught them pouring the lower level of this pod when we were touring that. That's what you see. That blue is a vapor barrier that goes underneath the slab, keeps it from wicking any some surface moisture here. This is a library as you're standing in the library. Then there's an incubator lab off the library. There'll be a foldable glass wall there. I'm assuming the library's going to take this over and kind of keep it open. But it's a pretty nice room that they'll have there. Very similar to the room at Lincoln off the library. And these are the, there's two other incubator labs between the houses. And that's going to be all glass there, and it'll be separated or made up for lab, lab space. As you can see, the sewer line that's being installed inside the houses, that links that all together. And that's the overall view of the building. It's about 325,000 square feet. And you can see the tract on the upper left. And you can see they're starting to pour the tennis courts. It's a post-tension slab. So, the goal is to have that all seeded, all that practice this fall. So, we get a full year's growth before we open. And I think their goal is to have most of that, their first lift of asphalt in around the whole building and get it landscaped before this fall.
And the Marion Road project, is that going with the city?
I believe that's on schedule. I know the most important part of Marion Road is our sewer connection that we tie in our main sewer connection, and that's there. So, we could, we're good. That was the most important piece of that, for me, anyway. So, other than that, any questions? I'm here. It's exciting time, and you start seeing it take shape.
We, so you sign up for public input at the beginning? I mean, we don't, the questions are... If we did this now, if we did the first boundary, I mean, we have rule if you want to speak, but questions you could ask him after. But during the meeting, we don't have question and answers. It's board input.
Yeah, there's some displays in each one of them.
For the public, yeah. So, that's how we handle it. And I know, Melanie, you're a board member, but yeah, if we could, we have to control how we do this, especially during the boundaries input. I wasn't afraid of what you were going to ask. I just don't want to open it up. I can't afford it. Thank you. Any other questions from board members for Jeff Kreider, please?
I just have a quick question. Oh, go ahead.
Nope, I was just, exciting to see them.
So, our other high schools have the big murals in the gym. Do you know what is the plan? I'm just looking kind of at the gym.
Some allowances in there. So, now that we have an AD and a principal, we're going to talk to them. We've talked to them about the graphics on the outside wall.
Sure.
And graphics on the fieldhouse. And now we're going to talk about the gym and the floor and what visual things they may want. Out of that, it's still going to come off that document that Casey presented for the, how the building's supposed to look. So, we're going to try to incorporate some of that in the gym so it's not so stark.
Sure.
It may not, it won't be quite like that.
Just the setup with the track and stuff wouldn't allow you to have the full.
We're starting to look at that, and then how the gym floor is going to be painted with some of that logo and graphics.
And in regards to Ben Rifele, the district has been in contact with their family, and they've also have some items they might want to have displayed at the building. So, it's very exciting that we're able to have that connection with them.
We're working on brand, you know, some banding in that gymnasium with that, one of those logos from that group in that gym as well. So, kind of, we're kind of starting to put some of that together now because we didn't, we didn't have that branding at that point when we...
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you very much.
We're working with Shane on that, so we're trying to keep them in the loop that they have input, so.
That's the principal at Ben Rifele. For those in the audience who don't know, Shane is just...
That's probably true.
Any other questions or comments for Jeff?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the CIP update?
I'm moved.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. I just thank you, everyone. Reminder, Thursday, 5:30 will be the middle school option. And to everyone who provided input, thank you for being a part of the process. We greatly acknowledge it and appreciate you being engaged in your children. And we, as board members, also have to take into consideration the people who are unable to reach out to us due to inability to know how to connect with us and so forth. So, when we're making the decisions, we are making sure we're taking all of that into perspective when we're making that. Thank you, and we will work with you to transition with changes that will come with building locations and so forth. So, good night. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.